Five, four, three, two, one. Hello, everybody. Welcome to the Strategic Directions Committee Meeting of Wednesday, November the 12th, 2025. We, in addition to our regular committee members, we have some new members that we'd like to welcome. That would be our IEC, our Indigenous Education Council rep Denise. And we have some Student Voice reps from Student Voice for the first time. Historic moment, Jack, and I believe there are two others that may be coming in, Selena and Laureen. And if not, then we'll see them shortly. So we'll call the meeting to order and welcome. The southeastern part of Vancouver Island, the Gulf Islands and the Lower Fraser River are the traditional territories of the Coast Salish peoples. For thousands of years, the Coast Salish people have lived in, traveled and fished the waterways of the Sailor Sea. The Hokamindum language is the language of this land. Hokamindum traditionally and to this day unites the Sanaas, Stenemo and Suminas peoples as one family and on whose territories we stand today. We also give thanks to the ancestors, hereditary leaders, matriarchs and creatures, big and small, who are looking after the rich resources and cultural teachings of this land. Ice Quail, everyone, Antipam Mark, I will be chairing the meeting tonight. So we will move on to the next items, additions to the agenda, deletions to the agenda. Change in order or if there's none of that, then remind everyone to put it into the chat. If, if there are any additions, deletions or change in order, if none, have a motion to approve the agenda, please. Moved by Tim, seconded by Chantel is what I've got on my screen. Any objections to that? If not, the motion to approve the agenda has passed. Are there any corrections to the minutes at all in the last meeting? Hearing no corrections, the minutes are approved. We don't have any presentations tonight, but we do have a number of senior staff reports. And we'll be starting off with Jackie Pullan, our Assistant Superintendent for Elementary. And she'll be joined by Margaret Olson, Assistant Superintendent for Secondary. Take it away, Jackie. You have the floor. Thank you.
Good evening and thank you so much through the chair. It's lovely to see everyone this evening. So we have brought forward the, an update for the literacy framework. So it'll be a little bit of a presentation coming this evening for the literacy framework and we'll be introducing Justin Green for District Vice Principal for Teaching and Learning Elementary and Kim Derbyshire, District Vice Principal for Teaching and Learning for Secondary, who will be walking through some of the updates around the literacy framework. So if we could invite Justin and Kim, then they'll be taking over the presentation for us.
Good evening. Just need to share. Let me give a thumbs up, Kim, when you can see it.
I thought you just wanted a general thumbs up.
It's always good to have that too. Is it there?
Nope.
Okay.
Yep, it is now, Justin.
There it is. We're good to go. Do you want to introduce yourself first? Do you want me to go?
Sure. Hi, everyone. I'm Kim Derbyshire. As Jackie mentioned, I'm District Vice Principal for Secondary. And I'm really excited to be here tonight and give this update on what's happening in literacy in secondary schools.
And I'm Justin Green. I'm the District VP for Elementary. Likewise, very excited to share all the great work that's happening in the district. We've got quite a bit going on, so we're going to somehow get through all of this in about five minutes. If I think, believe we have question and answers at the end, so we can certainly take care of it there. So just to provide a little bit of context with our strategic goals, being student success, truth and reconciliation and student employee wellness. What our goal is for this particular session with you is to really focus in on the student success portion of that. And so what we would like to do is provide a bit of an update tonight on what we're doing with reading, writing, oral language, and then what we call our ESS platform where we store and analyze data. We're also going to talk a little bit about the capacity building that Kim and I are working with a number of educators across the district. What we're doing in that area and then what our next steps are in this work. So when we do look at reading, one of the things that came out late, late June from the Ministry of Education was an update to what they were expecting reading screeners to look like. And so there were a number of criteria that all districts have to meet in order to have these reading assessments be validated by the ministry. What was amazing about the work when we look at NLPS and the work we've done over a number of years, well over a decade. We met pretty much every single criteria on the ministries list for K to three. We had to, in fact, we were going to remove one piece and found out that they would like us to have it. We put it back in. It was a very easy transfer for us, a transition for us into ministerial requirements. So what that reflects is just the great work that's been happening in our district around literacy in the primary years. Quite proud of that, in fact. What we have also done for reading in the K to seven lens, we've, we've really focused in on producing a learning continuum. So what does reading look like? From as early as pre-K, all the way up through grade nine. We identified that through ongoing research, ministerial documents, a number of different areas, trying to piece together what does learning in fact look like. What was interesting from this work was that the ministry then, of course, came up with a document late last year. We did a comparison with our work and in fact, we're quite, quite naturally in line with it. In fact, ours goes into a little bit more detail than the ministries does. So another fact that we're quite, quite proud of. I think you're muted, Kim. So no, is it not working?
Can you hear me now?
Yeah.
Okay, weird. The scope of the work in grades eight and nine is our focus for this year around screening foundational literacy skills. We chose to focus on two skills and that was comprehension and oral reading fluency. So those two screeners were introduced as a pilot at the beginning of this year, early in September. And every school has adopted those screeners this year, every secondary school for their eights and nines. The data from those screeners is accessed by classroom teachers and inclusion support teachers. And the intention of it is to be used to support instructional planning for the students in each class. Where the data shows specific lagging skills, they're targeted or they should be and can be targeted by either the classroom teacher or school-based supports with school-wide or classroom or individual strategies or interventions. And strategies and interventions aren't something that everyone, particularly in a secondary setting, is familiar with. And so we have started with some capacity building and started with the training of staff around the reading screeners and looking at the data and will continue throughout the year to discuss how that data can inform instruction. Will you click for me, Justin?
Of course.
Thank you. So this was the schedule that we recommended for all of our secondary schools this year. The schedule for the screening was aiming to start early in the fall so that it would inform instruction as early as possible. There's a recommendation to reassess for mastery only those students whose program included targeted strategies or interventions to support their growth. The spring assessment again is for all students to inform transition planning and to celebrate literacy skill development. When we say reassess for mastery, the hope, the target, of course, is to, to provide strategies and supports for students to gain mastery in all of the skills at grade level. But of course, success is any growth for each student and that's what we would celebrate for the learners. Regardless of whether they're achieving mastery, if they are seeing growth based on targeted supports, that is a goal for us, for sure. Worth celebrating. So next steps for grade eight and nine is to work on building data literacy skills to make data a meaningful piece of the puzzle for personalized programming or just write programming for every student. We talk a lot about digging deeper, which means understanding how to triangulate data with other information and provide targeted responsive supports for students. We want to be responsive to students, but in doing so, we do realize that current structures may need to be challenged. And there may need to be some curiosities about one of our, what our current structures look like. We've talked a lot about innovative, creative, thoughtful, responsive programming such as grade-wide reading groups, short-term targeted supports. We've talked a lot about disciplinary literacy and whole school strategies. We're also in the process of developing collaborative with classroom teachers and inclusion support staff, developing a literacy framework for secondary schools to support educators with tools, strategies and resources that support the reading goals of all our students.
Oh, did I skip one on you?
Nope, you did not.
Totally nailed it. Yes.
Thank you.
As the writing goes, so K to seven writing, the assessment is actually ready for rollout. We have what's called literacy leads in the, in the elementary grades. They're going to be introduced to these writing bins, starting on the 24th of November. So the bins themselves are ready. They include Story Workshop, which many of the trustees have experienced, I believe, last spring with Jackie. That assessment is going live for teachers to play with, to, to experiment with, try with kids, provide feedback to the district on how it goes. Did it provide the information they were looking for? We'll make adjustments and, and changes as necessary. We are looking for full implementation as we head into September next year. So this time, everyone will have access, access K to seven. Being again, providing that feedback that's necessary for any assessment that we launch in the district. We did also complete a learning continuum in writing for K to, or pre-K to nine. So much like the reading, we've done the same for the writing. And yeah, it's ready to go out. A number of, a couple of teachers have now seen the bins. They, I know Jen, Jen Pattern had run a Pro D event just a couple of days ago. Once, two schools were able to have a look at it and were quite pleased with it. So it's starting to head out to the system and people are, teachers are engaging with it and the feedback early is quite good. Oral languages is an area that we've really tried to focus in on from a district perspective. It is the heartbeat, the center of literacy without strong oral language skills, reading and writing become just that much more difficult. And so we've been very intentional, especially in the early primary grades to elevate this fact. So we have developed and produced oral language bins that have a sequence of 15 different lessons that teachers can engage with, with their students on developing oral language skills. At the same time, we also developed a learning continuum, K, pre-K to nine in oral language as well. What does oral language look like over time? Having been an intermediate teacher for a number of years, I owe, you know, early in my career viewed oral language as that PowerPoint presentation. How well did they do? But there's a little more to it than that. And so we're really trying to be explicit and descriptive in what oral language looks like over time. Those bins have now been distributed. We had our K and K one teachers attend a couple of sessions here at Dufferin. We distributed those out. The K and K one teachers are now able to use those with the support of their schools and their teams. We're also launching a pilot program at Fairview, so we're hoping to jump in there. I'm off there next week to do a reading session with a small group. We're really quite excited about launching this particular program. The other part to this is as we're developing all of this work in reading, writing and oral language, we need a place to, to host or to store assessment data. Now, this assessment data really, to be clear, is for teacher use. It's to inform instruction. We want to be able to identify where students are in their learning and change our instructional practices to meet those needs. To do that, we need a place to store it and to analyze that data in a quick and convenient way. We are developing that platform at the current time. Reading K to seven, so from, for the primaries and the intermediate grades, the reading screener data can be entered and analyzed. We also have a green, yellow and red assessment that looks at our priority populations. That is also available for staff to engage with and get a clearer picture of how their students are doing. And so jumping into capacity building and Kim, jump in anytime. The capacity building piece, there was a grant put out by the Ministry of Education and Childcare called the Literacy Professional Learning Grant. It provided funds to the district to engage the broader community in literacy-focused initiatives. And so we've taken that as a two-year grant and what we've done is planned out in detail our first year. And, you know, hopes and dreams and what we'd like to do with our second year, but base, it was hard to get into too many details in that first year without having, or too many details for our second year without having experienced the first. So upon reflection, once we get to the end of this cycle, end of this first year, we're going to really sit with it, collect the feedback and make some decisions about the second year of that grant. When we look at that grant, there have been a number of things in elementary that we've engaged with. And so this is just the quick shortlist. I know there's a lot of acronyms in there and I'll just go through them really quickly. But these are the, the initiatives that we're engaging the community in. We did our K in service and KK, K and K one teacher oral language sessions. Those went a lot, went over beautifully. We have another one for the sprint. We have a playful literacy series for early years teachers. We have our literacy lead series. They've had their first session, their second one, like I said, is coming up November 24th. They are jumping into all things literacy, all three aspects, reading, writing and oral language. The 24th will be focused in on writing. And those are for primary and intermediate teachers. The other piece we're trying to get off the ground is for French immersion. CFA is common formative assessment, meaning everybody uses the same assessment. They can have a conversation around it. We're trying to get the intermediate off the ground. We still have our older ones available to teachers to use, but we're trying to rejuvenate it, bring a little new life into it. So that one will be over the year. And then we're looking for a review of the French immersion reading for primary. We have a literacy learning series for new teachers. So these are teachers within their first five years. We want to show them some love and, and bring them in and help them with their literacy instruction. So that's the purpose of that series. We have a teacher librarian series as literacy leaders. And so we're pulling those TLs. They're coming in for a series on how to be leaders in their own context. We also have co-teacher collaboration sessions. So co-teachers are teachers that through the remedy process are assigned to schools to provide support. We also want to bring them in and support them in their literacy work. We had an EA literacy blitz during the early dismissal week. Where we, where we were able to connect with the majority of EAs across this district on how they can do literacy within their own context, working with small groups or individual students. And then we have our beam literacy session. So we've been working with new EAs to the district that they're going through the training program developed and, and produced by NLPS. Our literacy people are engaged in that process, helping these brand new EAs learn about literacy in that context as well. Okay. So those initiatives represent a significant, significant piece of the capacity building efforts of our team. Along with secondary and engaging in the screeners for eight and nine. This is what we're planning on doing this year and it's a lot of heavy lifting, huge work to bring in a lot of teachers to, a lot of educators to build their capacity around literacy. Our focus continues to be reading, writing and oral language, developing those continuums, gaining feedback from the system on those. Using ESS to analyze assessment data. And then of course, once that's all done, we're going to be working on helping build instructional practices to support all students learning. So those will be provided as we get through a number of these capacity building sessions.
Sorry, Kim, I don't think everybody can hear your voice. Want to give it a shot? I can't, I can't quite make that out. I don't know if it's on my end or other members of the committee able to hear Kim?
I can't, I can't hear.
It's quite soft, Kim. I'm not sure if you need to move a little bit closer to the microphone or something.
It's because I'm so demure.
There we go. You're back, you're back.
Is that better now?
There we go.
It is.
Wonderful. Thank you, Kim.
In order to hear me, you're also going to have to look at this close up. So sorry about that. Okay, so capacity building around reading eight, nine. We've kind of hit the ground running. We've had a pedal to the metal since September around it. Kirsten Funky Robinson and I have been working as well as some school psychologists around providing some training to school staff around using the literacy screeners, particularly in comprehension and oral reading fluency. And that has happened during some PLCs, some staff meetings. We have brought inclusion support teachers together and had inclusion support district meetings with inclusion support teachers, counselor meetings around literacy and then literacy leads from each school. In fact, we brought literacy leads together just this morning to collaboratively guide and support work through that secondary literacy framework. We've also provided PvP's with some learning sessions and learning loops. And of course, we collaborate with inclusion support teachers to support that collaborative effort through classroom teachers to analyze the data and to dig deeper when needed. So this is the capacity building that has started so far. We're really focused on the use of those foundational skill screeners, what to do with the data so that here's what, so what kind of idea and really building that data literacy in the system.
And so the next steps is looking at these oral language bins, certainly going out there already in schools, but we have to be able to support teachers in that work as well. Our, we're also looking, once the bins are out and rolling, excuse me, developing an oral language assessment for primary and for ELL students. So we want to take a closer look at that and see if there's ways that educators can have a clearer picture of how their students are doing with their oral language, specifically with the ELL students. The rollout of the writing bins, that's coming along with the assessment. And then developing a reading assessment for French immersion intermediate. That is going to be one of our big tasks heading into the spring. And then finally, of course, the feedback loops from the field in the spring as well. So thank you for your time, Isepka. I think we're available for a few questions. I'll leave that to the chair. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Kim and Justin. I would like to acknowledge the, the amount of time and energy and effort and, and gathering the information and putting it together to be able to deliver it to a, to a meeting is, is no short task. And I'm sure it, it took you both some time throughout the week and be before that, when you were told that this needed to be put together, you know, I can understand, you know, how, how much work it could be. So thank you so very much for presenting. Do we have any questions? I'd like to remind our, our newest members. You can also ask a question in the chat there. If you have anything that came up that you might want to know more about. So members of the committee, go ahead. If you have any questions.
Chair, should I stop sharing my screen? Is that a good time?
Um, either or. Don't make me make a decision, Justin. Yeah, go ahead. Yeah. Better back to regular. There we go. We have a comment from our, from Naomi.
Hi. Yeah. Hi. Sorry. I just wanted to say I can appreciate how much work goes into organizing this at the number of grade levels that you're trying to gather your data and then be able to employ strategies to improve learning. And I, I just say, I want to really appreciate it. It's no easy feat organizing all the different groups of teachers that you needed to get together in order to, to teach them how to use this information, how to do the testing. And I'm just really grateful, you know, this is one of our very important strategic plan goals. And I'm feeling very confident in our, in our district, in our senior staff that they're really, you guys are really working hard to, to improve our literacy outcomes. I can see that. It's quite evident. And I just want to thank you for your hard work.
Thank you for your kind words, Naomi. Let's go on to Chantel as a question.
Great. Thank you, Kim and Justin and everybody in the district, basically, who, because you know, everybody's going to be interacting with this at some point. But for those of you who created it, we got to see it actually last week with our professional learning working group. And we got to like test drive it a little bit. Jackie let us do that. And I have to say, that was really, really impressive, very well thought out. It was, it was really, really, really interesting. And I think if people wanted to see if they're curious about it, maybe they could take a look or something because I, I really found it quite something. Like it was something where you could like, sit down, start it. It was very clearly laid out, very, I, I just, I, I'm raving about this and, and maybe perhaps some people haven't actually seen it, but it, what you've said, I, I think if we showed that, they would see like, there's just so much thought put into that. Very, very impressed. It wasn't, you know, your run-of-the-mill assessments at all. We only got to the reading one, which like we were all just, you know, lots of questions and, and, and very curious about that. We never got to the writing one. Cause time ran out. And so, you know, our priority populations are those who are indigenous, children, youth in care and those with disabilities. And sometimes all three of those intersect all at one time. And sometimes folks aren't actually identified with a disability right away either, right? We know this, sometimes it takes quite a few years before we kind of realize, oh my gosh, they've been really trying to, to work hard at this. And now we're really realizing this is a real street data. This is like right on the ground data here. Not as overviewed. It's, it's very directed. And so my curiosity is regarding the writing aspect because I, I I, I know that the reading one is actually very accessible. It's got some great aspects to it that is really fantastic. The writing one though was more, I was curious about it and get to ask my questions. So I'm wondering what kind of accessibility measures have we incorporated into that? And I, I think it's more of a, like a kind of a three-part question to a certain degree because I'm wondering about the students who have been designated. We understand they need an accommodation or something like that. We already know kind of what's going on a little bit. But what about those who aren't designated yet? And it, it indicates something like what would happen then? So maybe I actually asked two questions and one, I'm cheating just a little tiny bit here, but one of them, it, it's, it's really about the accessibility of this. And I, I know that's incorporated in it. I just really like to highlight that to the public. If you, if you can, thank you.
And do you want me to go first, Kim? Okay. The, it's a fantastic question. So you, the board had done the story workshop back in the spring. That isn't built into the assessment itself. So that whole process over five days, all of that learning that takes place, reading stories, drawing, having conversations, all of that group work occurs in our assessment. What we want to do is model really good practice. So if our assessment is aligned with good practice, we hope that that carries on and teachers, you just change the book and you do the process again. As far as making that up. As far as making adaptation, adaptations or accommodations for our kids with specific needs, I, I can describe one student I had a couple of years back. Couldn't write, struggled with reading, really tough. If, if all I'm assessing is the ability to scribe, he, he wouldn't be successful. If I'm to assess his ability to organize a story, beginning, middle and end, to add interesting details and vocabulary, to develop his ideas and go deeper with it. Do I need him to scribe to do that? No, I use Google read write. Right? So he told his story into a computer. I had to teach him how to talk like a robot. That was fun. But his story became, it, it came to life. And he was able to actually have it read back to him. He could hear his own story and share it with his parents. If I'm assessing writing, what is writing? It's an expression. It's a, it's a way to express our thoughts and ideas to others. We have to be flexible in the way we approach how kids write or communicate their understanding or their ideas or their stories. So we do that through the assessment. We very clearly articulate that there are universal adaptations for all students. They all deserve these. But please allow for that to happen for any child that needs it because we want to be able to assess their ability to communicate an idea. It doesn't just have to be by scribing, if that makes any sense. So we're also asking teachers to be really clear on, yes, we have our expectations for grade three. Here's what writing should look like. But please identify where they are on that learning continuum. So you can move their learning forward as well. Right? So we not only allow for the assessment to be open to all, but we also want to be able with the data that we gather, have that as a learning, it's informing our instruction. Where do we go next with this child? Where's their learning next? That's built into the assessment as well. I think I answered your question. Okay.
Great.
Kim, is there anything that you'd like to add to that?
Sure, I will. Just very quickly. I think you've highlighted a really, a really important piece of the digging deeper puzzle around students and triangulating information. And it's one of the reasons why when we have a screener data that tells us that we need to know more about a student, that that digging deeper really needs to look into a lot of different information that we have about students, particularly priority populations. So the more that we know, the more that we are able to provide that just right programming for the student and writing is a part of expression. It's not the only part of expression. And as Justin said, writing doesn't necessarily equal comprehension. We can have data that tells us that a student's writing is not at grade level, but comprehension is above grade level. And so just right programming, it me comes from just right assessment. And that means that we're gathering the data that we need to know about each individual learner to be able to respond to them. And that's what this whole literacy program is all about this year. It's being able to respond in a personalized way to every learner and, and removing those barriers that have, that have historically been in place. And that's why we have priority populations. That's the, that's the point of the term to make them priorities. So thank you for that question.
Thank you very much, Kim and Justin. I thank you for like elaborating on that because I think it's a, it's an aspect that people are curious about, might not think to ask. And you're doing such wonderful work in it. And I think it needs to be highlighted. Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Thank you. We have a few more questions. Thank you, Chantel. Megan.
Hi there. Can folks hear me? Right. Okay. So assessments absolutely can help teachers and the rest of the learning community sort of identify students who are needing supports. What we hear overwhelmingly from members is that teachers need time to work with those students needing support. Will the results of any of these assessments drive any additional staffing or other supports to schools and to those students, those priority populations who need those supports? Because assessing without intervening with additional supports, you know, more teacher time to help those kids reach their full potential can feel a little bit the equivalent of x-raying the broken arm, but not putting a cast on it. To know that the arm's broken is great, but then we actually have to do something to make things better. So is there additional teacher time for these? For our priority populations out of what comes from these assessments?
Thanks, Megan. I think, I think Jackie popped up. Maybe Jackie wanted to have a say on that one? After she turns on her microphone?
Sorry, I did the same thing. I got the camera on and not the mic. My apologies. So of course, when we do use these assessments, then schools take the resources they have and they target them for the students in the areas that they can, which so as a, as a school, the conversation can be around where are the interventions needed and using the resources that they have within the school? And of course, you know, working with Justin and Kim, making sure that we are helping the teachers build their capacity around what's happening in the classroom as well as building the capacity of ISTs. And as you heard, you know, Justin comment earlier, building the capacity of our EAs as well. So, you know, using the resources and having this data helps schools target the resources for the students. So it's just, it's a really clear direction towards it.
Thank, thanks, Jackie. And Naomi said that was a good question, Megan. We can move on to our next comment from Leanne.
Hi, thanks, guys. This is so exciting because this is like one of the whole reasons I became a trustee was specifically for this reason. So I'm really excited that we've been able to really focus in on this and make it a priority and put the money into this so that we can make a difference for kids. It's funny, everyone's questions had me like thinking about more questions and your answers to those questions. I just wanted to comment that I really appreciate the amount of effort that's put into how we're supporting educators to build capacity around this, because I think that that's really important. As Megan was saying, it's, it's so overwhelming in classrooms and in schools right now, but this should eliminate some of that overwhelm, right? If kids are able to have the literacy skills they need, it should be able to relieve some pressures within the classroom. And my final comment would, would just be, Justin, I really appreciated the comment around universal adaptation should be available for all. I think that sometimes we forget that these are available and that they may help a student be extremely successful if they have access to, to it. So I, I really hope that we're making sure that our educators hear that and they're willing to be able to allow students access to those adaptations that we have available. Thanks, guys.
Thanks, Lan. If there's no other new speakers, we can circle back to Naomi again.
Hi, I just want to follow up. I, I, I think I did thank you for sharing my comment on Megan's comment, our question. I do want to follow up because I think Jackie, if I can ask you more specifically, I know we have this pot of money that we've put aside. And I think it's more specific that that yes, we can have all the training and we can, like the school has X amount of resources, but when, when a school realizes that there are some real gaps in learning, the resources we have, I think what Megan was alluding to may not be enough in the school, like they may require more support than that. Is that where we could like, you know, theoretically step in to provide more supports to be able to do these sort of learning interventions for the students?
We always look at whatever supports we can put into schools. And of course, we are always reviewing that all the time in regards to what the school needs are for, for literacy, for numeracy, for safety as well. So we always look across all the different wins and where we can put the resources in for sure.
Okay, great. Thanks, Jackie.
Thanks, Naomi. Do you have a, do you have a follow up or, okay? I don't see any further questions. So Jackie and Margaret and Kimberly and Justin, I want to thank you for your, for your time with the literacy rollout update. It's for the framework. So any, any parting, any parting comments at all before we move on to the next? Okay. Thank you so very much.
Thank you for the opportunity.
Hey. Okay, committee, moving on to the next item on the agenda is eight point two. We have Jackie Poole and our assistant superintendent on the late French immersion program review. Welcome again, Jackie.
Thank you so much. So you do have it in your package as well, but in the spring of 2025, the staff conducted an internal review of the late French immersion program at the request of the board. The goal of this review was to better understand how the program is serving students with the focus on retention, equity, student outcomes and long-term sustainability. The review identified important areas for us to reflect upon. And we've just outlined on the info sheet, some of the key recommendations that I'll just speak to here. And then the fuller report is there. It's a three or four page report that's attached as well. So we do want to continue to monitor and review the long-term viability of the late French immersion program. So we'll be looking at that over the next, you know, year or two. Looking at exploring ways to increase participation from our underrepresented student groups. So we noticed in the review that our students with our priority populations are not represented in the late French immersion. So we do want to make sure we're exploring ways that we can potentially increase that participation. We also want to strengthen support during the transition years where student attrition is the highest. So we do be real able to note, you know, between which grades students in late French immersion tended to not continue. And so how can we support that, that transition so that they stay in late French immersion? And then of course, continue to improve communication and promotion of the program across our schools and communities to ensure that we have full registration coming into the late French immersion program in grade six, to have it as high as we possibly can. So those were kind of the key recommendations that are outlined here and the full review is attached. And if I, there are any questions, I can speak to them now.
Thank you, Jackie. Do we have any questions on this review? I think you're off the hook, Jackie. Oh. I think self-abscribed, I always have questions. Go ahead, Chantel, if you have a question.
Thank you so much, Chair, Mark, Mark Chair. Through you, Chair, to Jackie. Now, when I grew up, I went to, I was living in a small, tiny French town. I had to be driven 45 minutes to a tiny, very tiny, tiny English school. And because I didn't know enough French there, if you are going, there's no French immersion, really. There was just English or French schools. And if you don't have enough good French, then they don't allow you to go to the school there. So up until grade nine, I was, or up till grade eight, I was bused to this tiny little school. And then the next phase would be, or the next step, the transition would be to high school, which is over an hour away. And I was having none of that. So I decided that I would go to the French school. And by then I had already picked up a lot because I lived in a French town. I had a lot of French family. You, you had to speak French basically by that time. And so I said, I'm going to just go to the school. That's literally five minutes down the road from me. And I had to take a test to actually get into that, that, get into the school and I passed and you know, here we are today on the West Coast. So my reasons were because I wanted to go, I didn't want to travel so far to go to French school or to go to school period. And so my, my curiosity here is we have students that come into late French immersion and that's in grade six, correct? And from what I'm understanding, it was kind of created to, because there was such an overwhelm, too many people, you know, I, I've heard of the campers out there camping for three days to, to get your child a spot into French immersion. But that, that's no longer an issue. We have created enough spaces, which is really fantastic for our district. But my curiosity about the late French version now, and I, I understand that it's being kept too because there's Gabriola students who really can't make it at such a young age to come over the ferry on by themselves. Their parents would have to drive them over if they wanted to start in kindergarten. So grade seven for them is, is accessible for them or grade six, sorry. And so I'm wondering though, long story short, is how many students are coming from Gabriola and how many students are coming for other reasons? And is it possible for us to start to understand kind of why folks are coming in at late French immersion in grade six? Cause I think maybe that could help inform us in a future review kind of thing?
So I actually don't have the exact number of how many of the grade sixes this year are from Gabriola. I would need to go and get that, but I can get that for you and I can get that back to you for sure. I do know that one of the things we would take, like to take a look at is more of the why are students coming in? It wasn't one of the questions that was asked in this review. And as we are continuing to monitor it going forward, it's certainly a question that we'll be asking both why do they come in, but also when they choose to leave, a little bit more of an accident to view on what's, what's the reasons so that we can have a better sense of how we can support that differently. So those are two considerations for us moving forward.
Excellent. Thank you so much, Jackie. Yeah, it's a, it's a very well-loved program here and I'm glad that we're doing a review and really looking at it in a very fulsome manner. And I do appreciate these recommendations. Actually, they're very well thought out. Thank you very much for all the hard work on this to everybody who was involved. I have another question, but that's more of a technical issue and I will wait for other people if they have other questions. So thank you.
Sure. Thanks. Thanks for the answer, Jackie. If there are any other questions, we can circle back to Chantel again. Go ahead, Chantel.
Uh, it's actually just a clarification on the, the retention rates on page 12 of the agenda. It says, I, I'm trying to understand what this means. The 2025, 2026, 33% retention rate. Does that mean that 33% now are on track to graduate?
No, that, so that would have been that of the students who came in to late French immersion in grade six, 33% graduated out of grade 12 with a dual dogwood.
Okay, great.
So if there would, right? So and that's just the late French immersion. So let's say we would have had, so whatever number came in, 33% stayed with it from grade six all the way through to grade 12 and graduated with a dual dogwood in grade 12.
Okay, great. Cause it just says 2025, 2026 and we're still 2025.
Yeah, it's probably a typo there. It should be, it should be 24, 25. So if I take a look, the, the dates actually have 23, 24, and then we jumped to 25, 26. So that's a typo that should be 24, 25. Thank you.
Thank you. And I didn't even notice that it jumped. Thank you very much. Awesome.
Not a problem. Thank you.
Thank you for those questions, Chantel. Thank you, Jackie. If there are no further questions, we can move on to the next item and agenda and Jackie, we will wish you a great evening. The next, yeah, you're welcome. Our next speaker for senior staff is our most seniors of staff was eight point three, Robin Gray, our superintendent. Going to give us a, a little bit of a, a 411 on inclement weather and how school closures are determined, which is very apt for this time of year. Thank you, Robin.
Thank you very much and good evening, Board and other committee members. Thank you. It is the time of year and you started it out trustee Robinson with that notion that we're getting ready for those events that may come up. So on page 14, you're going to see a bit of our process. We have a really solid background. You can see at the very beginning that the facility staff planned for this. We have a lot of equipment, about $43,000 put aside for 10 events for the year. And we also have a lot of labor that is ready to go in order to serve the purpose of supporting our schools in terms of whether they be snow days, whether they be other days. So you can see that is there. And also I think too that the QB collective agreement also allows for up to two snow days per employee. So we're ready to go. But I think the, the thing that matters most to many of us, including our parents, would be what happens through this process. And you're going to see there that our transportation manager is right in, right out early in the, early in the wee hours of the morning, making sure that our road conditions are, are determined to be. making sure that our road conditions are, are determined to be in good shape and and able to transport our buses and so on. But you'll see there down below on page fourteen, that the decision will often be made before six AM. We know that it's very difficult for parents if school happens to be canceled or their buses. So there are several possible outcomes that could occur if it is a snow event. So I'm going to start with D, and where it says that schools remain open and that all buses are running. Sometimes we do have a snow event, or we have some inclement weather, and we still move forward around school. The next possible option would be that accessible bus routes are canceled while other buses continue to run and schools remain open. And then third would be all bus routes are canceled, but schools still remain open. We know that geographically, that our schools are spread from Ladysmith to Lanceville to Gabriola Island. And so, and sometimes even in that Mountain View area, in comparison to maybe a school that's closer to the ocean, the conditions can be quite different. And so there are times that we will close all schools. So that's a little bit of a review of how we work through that process. And of course, the superintendent is the one who helps to make that decision. And of course, I'm guided by many people who give me feedback, certainly in the wee hours of the morning. And so when the decision is made that one of those things occur, A, B, C, or D, communications will be contacting principals and vice principals. We will contact the local radio station, we'll send messages via school messenger to all of our families and our caregivers. And then from there, we will be certainly looking at some of our labor who can go out early in the morning and even get called out at twelve AM the night before, where they begin plowing, sanding, salting the bus drop-off areas as well as the staff and the student parking. And then, of course, from there, we look at removal of snow from interior sidewalks, ramps, main entrances and exits. And then lastly, of course, we follow the rules of the city bylaw and we go from there. So it is something that I know the priority is around safety first. But we also know it's very important that we keep education going for our public and our community and our students. And so that is our timely update with regard to the inclement weather process. And I'm certainly open to any questions that anyone has.
Thank you, Robin. That's very informative and timely. Anyone have any questions for Robin? With regards to school closures on inclement weather? Have a comment from Jeff. Take it away, Jeff.
Uh, thanks Chair. And yeah, a great report on how it's done. I think that's pretty helpful for the community. I feel like it's a good time to discuss QB side on one of the parts of this report. And I guess the best way, like, let's start with how we got that support staff only gets paid for two days during inclement weather. So back in the day, we had a handshake agreement with the school district that there's an inclement weather day, or better known as snow days. That support staff can actually go to their nearest school and go to work. At that time, you know, the employer saw it was unfair that teachers and managers being salaried would get paid, and while support staff didn't. So that's, that's why we had that handshake agreement, and it wasn't perfect, but it did allow support staff the opportunity to not lose a day's pay. We can move ahead a number of years, and that handshake agreement got kind of amended. So our support staff was allowed to go to their school that they worked at. QB fought this, we didn't like it, we thought it was putting people in danger by at least going to the nearest school that most people could walk. But anyways, we lost it, and that was fine. And then, then we went to about ten years ago, and that's when we finally negotiated the two paid days. And this was actually put into the collective agreement. So that's how we got here. But now, if I can just quickly explain what our issue with that is. You know, we know how important equity is to NLPs, the word's used a lot. But from a labor relations angle, this current situation is not equal. Support staff were only guaranteed two inclement weather days, and managers and teachers are paid for every day. And we're not begrudging them. I mean, we think it's the right thing to do. We just feel that support staff should be treated, treated the same. Some years, it doesn't matter. I think the district does a great job in keeping schools open, actually. So some days, some years it won't matter, we don't even get to the two days, some days we have more. But now, and this is where I'm trying to get away from using the term snow days, because we're actually seeing more inclement weather days. I think last year, I think Cedar was closed for a day due to power outages due to windstorms, and I'm pretty sure Gabriola got hit too. So if that happens, now those staff, now they've, now they're down to one day. And chances are, there's probably one or two, I know the kids are hoping for more, but could be one or two snow days during the year. So anyways, got some ideas on how to fix this. I know that's not for tonight, that'll be for a budgetary discussion coming your way. But I just thought, I just wanted to let you guys know where QB stood on that part of it. So thanks.
Thank you. Thank you, Jeff. Yeah, Robin.
I just wanted to thank Jeff for his comments and certainly going through the chair as well. Thank you.
Wonderful. Thank you, Robin. Thank you, Jeff. We have a question from Trustee Tanya.
Thank you, Chair. Wait, there we go. Thank you, Chair. Through the chair to Superintendent Gray. Robin, my question was, one of the things that parents, parents have asked me a few times that I never can remember the answer to, is how do we determine? Or who determines if time gets made up? Like, would we have to lose like, oh, two weeks of school with a massive blizzard? Where we add on days at the end of the year, or add on hours, or how does that work?
Well, through the chair, we most often have never made up that time. There's usually some time within the frame of our school calendar year where we have some extra minutes. There's always that kind of that buffer. And in my time and in my career, I have never seen that time ever made up. And I think it's very relevant, it's a great question by parents. Because of course, their biggest concern would be around ensuring that their child gets the educational time that they need. I think once upon a time in my memory, there was a time, I think in Ladysmith, that the power was out for about four days. And I do not believe we made up that time at that, in that era. And that was only about maybe four or five years ago.
And if I could have a follow-up, Chair?
Yes, go ahead.
What would the implications be if we had snow closures during that exam period for our high school students? That little, like, in the transition there, our grade twelves doing their, I don't know, they, I know they don't have as many provincial exams or, and such as they did when I was a student, but I know there's a few year-end exams, or semester-end exams.
Thank you, and through Trustee Robinson, the Chair, thank you for that question. Now, it's interesting, there's not a lot of in-person exams, in fact, virtually they're done throughout a week. So there is always that ability to actually work through a virtual process of that. And so, and then, and of course, we only have literacy twelve and literacy ten and numeracy ten. And they actually are conducted through a process of a whole week. And so students can have very different times to actually do those assessments. Back in the other day, they would have been all coming at the same time doing that assessment.
Yeah, yeah. And I think that's what this individual was thinking of, because that's how it was when we were in school. All right, thank you. That was me.
Thank you, Tanya. Comment from Chantel. Thank you, Robin, for reminding the school community of what the process is, which can help a lot with anxiety for families and staff. Thank you, Chantel. We have a question from Tom. Go ahead, Tom. Welcome.
Hi, I'm just trying to figure out how to get myself on screen. There we go. I have two questions. I'm gonna flip a coin and ask this one. The, all those four categories that you went through, that you kind of have an option of landing on when you have to make the big decision. The one that I find the most interesting, and that I'd just like to kind of question a bit, is the idea that buses aren't running, but schools are open. Which to me kind of implies that, you know, our roads are, are difficult, and they're not really all that safe for some of the safest vehicles out there. But we are going to be open, and that tends to put a lot of people on the road in what could be some difficult situations. So if we kind of unpack, it seems to be a bit of a middle ground, like, we're not able to safely transport our own students. But now staff and families are going to feel compelled to get to school somehow. This might also play into whether the city buses decide to make a similar call, because so many of our students are reliant there. Can you just kind of talk about why you might end up on, on option two out of the, out of the four?
Thank you, Trustee Rookabye. It's probably my least favorite option as a superintendent. And in fact, I don't know in my time whether that's the one I often make. In fact, I don't think I've made it even once yet in my time of making that decision. Because I think I totally agree, there's this pressure point that happens, and I think that there's certain areas that might get hit geographically around maybe a bus area. But we also know that staff come from those areas as well as kids. And so it's one of those places that we do not like to do that. And, and me personally, I do not like to actually choose that particular option unless it's very specific. And I asked the same question around number C, in terms of the accessibility buses. But sometimes those routes are quite different as well. So I think it's really about an impact on an overall district versus maybe a particular area. And so I think that's always that balance, balancing point that one has to determine when they make that decision.
That's a good answer. Thank you very much. I have a follow-up, Mark, but I'm gonna have to let Naomi go first, because it's not really a follow-up. I'm gonna have to get back in line.
Sure. Thanks, very, that's very generous of you, Tom. I would have allowed the other side of that coin that you flipped. Naomi, go ahead with your question.
Yeah, that was very technical of Tom. I was okay with him asking that question, the next one. My question was just this interesting scenario we have now, of, because we've got so many daycares running in our schools now. So in that situation, because I know we have some private daycare still that, that are operating in the school system, and then we also have our ones that we have been piloted for daycares, like the piloted daycare programs. How does this affect that? So when we say we're closing down, like, when we say it's a snow day, does that mean that it's a snow day, and that means that even the private daycares don't aren't able to come in and use the facilities, because the facilities will be well, closed, I guess, or, and same with you know, we're offering the before and after-school daycare, so the seamless entry. Like, how does that all work into this? I saw something we had to deal with in the past.
I think for the most part, Trustee Bailey, and of course, I'm gonna ask Jackie Poole to correct me if I'm wrong. But when we do shut down schools, the majority of the community also shuts down. So we would cancel extracurricular activities at the end of the day as well. So once we make that decision that schools are closed, all of the facilities are closed, whether they are daycare-operated and or not.
Thank you, Robin.
You're welcome.
Thanks, Naomi. I'm gonna recognize Greg for the next question, and then we'll circle back to you, Tom, after Greg. Go ahead, Greg.
Yeah, thanks, Mark. I may have answered my, my own question. As, as people were discussing the previous questions, I was, I was wondering if we have an AP related to school closures, because I thought that the information in the report was quite good in the sense of how it explained the, the process and procedures and, you know, different outcomes that could be possible. Maybe I'll rephrase this in terms of, am I right in the sense that it, we do have an AP, but it's under emergency student dismissal and or school closure? And I'm, I'm sorry to sort of pull this out of left field on you, Robin. I probably weren't expecting this as a question. And I don't expect you to have an answer off the top of, of the blue like this. It was more just, I guess, in a general sense, wanting to ensure that if we don't, perhaps, that we do have a clear AP so that, you know, maybe not you in your position now, but ten years from now, or five years from now, when you decide to retire, or you know, at some point, whoever's in your place can refer to an AP to ensure consistency.
I will, we will respond if that's okay, Chair. I think it's, I would take that under advisement for certain. I think it requires certainly some parameters and some protocols with regard to the circumstance. I also think it's always a good thing to have a little bit of flexibility as well. And I think that's the comment that Jeff made earlier from QB that things change. And I think that in the past, it's been a lot of work around snow days. But lately, it's been about power outages and inclement weather. And so we're always trying to be nimble and flexible with regard to this. And I think that we always want to balance out the needs of our community and our families in terms of making sure safety takes precedence. But at the same time, the second point of order would be around education and making sure we do what's right by families as well. So it's always a bit of a, a push and a shove, and a bit of a balanced approach with regard to this. And, but I also think there needs to be a little bit of structure, a good AP with some flexibility in terms of that as well. So really appreciate that.
Thanks. I'll, I'll leave that with you. It's, you know, it's an operational matter, and if it needs to be an update or a new one, maybe we'll see that coming forward. Thank you.
Hey, thanks, Greg. Tim is challenging my hokamenum here. Kumut closes, if the district closes, it's in the policy. Okay.
He's referring to, he's referring to Kwamut Lailam.
Thank you. And what did I say, Kumut? Okay, there we go. So Kwamut Lailam. Thank you, Naomi. Tom, we're gonna circle back to you.
Thank you very much, Chair. Yeah, Robin, Greg kind of got close to my second question. And it was about what can families and staff expect when these events happen during the day when we've already all assembled at our schools? Is there a procedure or step protocol for deciding, you know, when we're gonna dismiss students, when we're gonna force all students to leave, when we're gonna roll buses early? Because that, that to me has always been even more complicated. And I guess I'm wondering, what do we, what's our best practices there?
Oh, such a good question. And it's always, it's always a challenge. When it comes to elementary schools, once school has begun, we certainly, we will alert families to say it's up to you to come and pick up your child if you'd like to do so. If you can't get there, maybe you're already at work, maybe you're somewhere else, maybe you're out of town. But once school has started, kids are always going to be there. We always have supervision there. Teachers, principals, vice principals will always remain there. When it comes to our secondary schools, we do the same thing. Often, many of them do walk, but at the same time, we always offer the opportunity for parents to come and pick up their child if they'd like to. But there's also the opportunity for children to stay. So once school has started, we remain in operation. And I think that once in my career, I think we closed down at twelve, but we really didn't close down. What we did say is that schools need to be closed, but come and pick up your child if you can. If you can't, they will be here under safe care until you're able to get here, or until the buses are here and moving forward. Very complicated once they're there.
Okay, thank you. That's it. All right. We don't have any more questions. So Robin, thank you so very much for rolling that out, letting us know this, the, the four-one-one on school closures and inclement weather. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Moving on to item eight point four, which is regarding our new administrative procedure for commencement ceremonies. We have Mark Walsh, our secretary treasurer, and Margaret Olson, our assistant superintendent for secondary, which is where all commitment ceremonies shall be. Go ahead, Mark.
Sure, thank you, Chair, and I'll, I'll kick it off, and Margaret's, I'm sure, here to answer questions as well. So what the Board's looking at this evening is a new administrative procedure to address an issue that's come up a number of times in the last number of years, where our secondary principals are looking for a little bit of guidance on what's to occur at a commencement ceremony. So this is relatively minor, you will, you will see, but what, it's, it's got the backing that the ceremonies are fundamentally important. That, that they should be incorporating, obviously, our policies that promote public education, quality, diversity, inclusion and justice, again, in line with our policies. So it sets out who should be expected, that our principals should be ensuring that they're involving in the ceremony. And so you'll see incorporate local indigenous culture in the ceremony, including but not limited to Atlantic acknowledgement, and may include greetings from local First Nations representatives. So of course, that's not, if a local First Nation representative doesn't wish to attend, or the first, local First Nation that obviously wouldn't, but of course, be welcome, and the principal will be working on that. Digitaries, the focus really is on the school board, given the role of the board in public education and the School Act. In addition to ensuring the superintendent or delegate is invited, but really limiting the number of speakers that would be occurring at such an event. I know that's been feedback from our students, it's been feedback from our families. And so really, some schools may choose just to have the school trustee speak, some the trustee and the superintendent if they so wish, or delegate. And then you'll see the ability to recognize others, but there won't be speaking roles necessarily for other individuals. Lastly, there won't be any information handed out from third parties during these ceremonies. Just again, to give the the principals of our schools just a little bit of consistency in the way that it works. And then finally, the focus again on the completion certificates. And so we've had some feedback that some of our ceremonies are running quite long for a variety of reasons. And so the focus is that. Obviously, students that are, you know, getting that governor generals award or something very, very unique and significant to that local community, maybe incorporated, but otherwise limiting what's occurring at their ceremonies. And then finally, the AP would not apply to the indigenous graduations ceremony. So we have consulted with our secondary principals. And I think the the feedback from that group was appreciative of the guidance and the consistency while still allowing that local culture of the school to to shine through. And then finally, I'll just note that it says commencement ceremonies, just originally was graduation ceremonies. But what we have is a situation where I know a lot of people call that movement from grade seven to grade eight graduation. And just to be very, very clear, that's what we're looking at is secondary commencement ceremonies. So, Margaret, I'm not sure if you want to add anything, or we just, we're here to ask, answer any questions. We've tried to get this done well in advance. And so we're not even thinking about graduation ceremonies yet. But we probably will be sooner rather than later. So happy to answer any questions. Margaret, I don't know if you want to add anything.
No, I think you nailed it. I think the important piece is around that it's also taking into consideration local practices that have happened at schools. So it's not a one size fits all.
Thank you, Mark and Margaret. Chantel says, thank you for creating a consistent framework that honors the role of the trustee in the community, school community, while also respecting a school's unique culture. Thank you, Chantel, for those comments. Any any questions for Margaret? I'm gonna wish you a very good evening, Margaret, and thank you for your time this evening. You are off the hook. Have a wonderful Wednesday evening.
Thank you.
Mark, however, is not off the hook because now it's the Mark Walsh Show with about four or five items here. So we're going to move on to item eight point five, Public Interest Disclosure Act Annual Report. Go ahead, Mark.
So thank you, Chair. So here, this is a required yearly report out to the board with respect to provincial legislation that applies to, I believe, all public sector entities in the province. The Public Interest Disclosure Act, otherwise known as the whistleblower act. And so the idea is that this gives an avenue to employees to be able to make reports out in the appropriate manner with respect to wrongdoing by the supervisor designated officer to the district, or maybe to the ombuds person, depending on the circumstance. I'm happy to report that there hasn't been any reports in the two and a half years that this has been in place in the district. The reality, however, is is that, you know, we live, we we work in a district that, you know, we have management, we have lots of individuals with eyes on a lot of processes. So I'm not sure there's heck of a lot of opportunities here. So it's not just that we're that we're good and that that people are not reporting instead of that. We also have internal structures, I think, that are very, you know, make it conducive to to that. So ultimately, and and we've taken this template from another school district, and it's been the similar across the system. I will be attending, and Robin and I may well be attending an event, I think, in a week or two's time. Hearing a little bit more about what the ombuds office is thinking about recommending with respect to this legislation now that's been in place across the province for about five years. So just there, there you are. The last thing is, is we express appreciation to our principals and to our staff for yet another policy that they need to be aware of, or another action that they need to be aware of, that we're trying to make staff aware of with respect to this ability to do a report out. So good news, not much to report. And we hopefully will continue to have not much to report because there isn't any conduct that would approach that level. Happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Mark. Anyone on the committee have any questions for Mark? I don't see any, so we'll move on to item eight point six, which is the big one, first quarter financial report. Again, that will be with you, Mark.
Thank you, Chair. And so maybe unfortunately, the Q one report was not typically the big one for for us. And the reason is, is when you think about the way that our fiscal year is broken up. So we go from July the first to June the 30th. So when you think about it, 12 months. And then so July and August, well, there's not a ton of activity in July and August, particularly when many of our employees are 10 month employees. Much of the change that would happen within our budget is going to start in, you know, not even maybe until October. And so what you're seeing is not exactly reflective of, you know, how important Q two will be to determine, you know, our performance, our financial fiscal performance this year. So ultimately, when you do look at Q one, what you are looking for is I'm not going to go through the minor changes because they really are minor in nature. And there's a number that are not necessarily even reflected here because some of them happened after September 30. So when you think about it, we get confirmation of our enrollment after, you know, we submit to the ministry on September 30, there's not enough time to reflect those decrease or increase in revenue and positions, et cetera, for that Q one. So but when you go to page 22, you will see, and this is really the the important one, is the both the collect, the percentage of funds collected and expended in a given area and the comparator to previous years. So that's very important. So when you look at teacher salary, for example, well, teachers are paid over 10 months. So if we are in September, we're really one out of 10. So you're you're thinking that we should probably be at about 10% of our budget and expenditure in September and low holds. You look there at the at page 22, and you'll see that's exactly where we're at. And in fact, we are, we were the same last year. Administrative officers, a little bit different, three months in, 12 month employees, we should be sitting at about 25%. And so again, similar year, year to year. And so really, too early, particularly as a, one of the big factors that's been unpredictable over the last number of years has been our substitutes. It's labeled substitutes because that reflects TTOCs, teachers teaching on call, as well as our EVA replacements and other replacements on our our QP partner side. So it's comparable year to year, which is good. It shows that we're neither under nor above budgeted in that, but it's also not very surprising. So difficult to extrapolate many trends based off of the the Q one that we that we're seeing here today. So I'm really not going to dig too much deeper in into the Q one, except for to say, nothing that we have is raising any alarm bells with respect to either the under expenditure or the over expenditure. But it's such a small percentage of of the year for for a majority of what we do, that it's not it it's good that we're watching, but it's Q two that we'll really did spend some time and dig deep into.
Thank you, Mark. Just for a clarification, when I said the big one, it was for tonight. I know often we do some amazing things like literacy rollout. And, you know, we got our first students on on committee level for the first time ever. And and, you know, it's going to be all about the the numbers, right? So do we have any questions for Mark? Before we go into our last item for the agenda for this evening, Megan, go ahead.
Hey there. Thank you for the discussion around how salaries work for teachers and administrators, because I absolutely had exactly that question with respect to why it appears, at least on paper, that 20, almost 25% of admin salaries has been expended. But I think maybe connected to that a little bit. Does this mean all site admin are 12 month employees? And is there an expectation that they're going to be working at schools over the summer?
So through you, Chair, so no, not necessarily. And so our school administrators are provided holidays. And so they have this, so similar, similar to a teacher, as an example, in December and March, when really they're working, you know, maybe two weeks out of out of that span. But we're still paying them 100% of the salary and they're getting some time off, similar to admin. So I can't remember the return date. I'm not sure someone like Jackie or Robin want to jump or Margaret want to jump in. I can't remember what the return date this year was. Obviously, many of our administrators are, you know, keeping apprised of what's happening, whether they're technically on on a holiday or not. But that they they do work second or third week of August, I believe it is.
I think Robin's.
I am jumping on if that's okay.
Yep.
Yes, I think to answer your question, Megan, there is a, they have a particular contract and they're always expected to be usually at the work site a couple of weeks in advance of school startup. In addition to that, they do spend a couple, maybe a week or two, depending on the time that they need at the end of the school year as well. So that they they are basically 12, 12 months employees based on a salary, and they do have holidays within that frame as well. I hope that helps.
Thank you, Robin. Thank you, Megan, for the question. Do we have any further questions for Mark before we move on to the last item of our agenda tonight? Okay.
And sorry, sorry, Chair, I'm just gonna add one, one other thing, just just for again, when we get to Q two, just to keep an eye out for is one of the the issues with the classroom enhancement fund is that the fund is growing bigger and and bigger. And so, you know, normally special purpose, you know, we have to account for every single teacher that that's going to be funded under that particular envelope. But at the same time, that number is getting bigger and bigger on a yearly basis. And so just for Q two, when we do get to special purpose, that's that's one of the areas that we that we will will be watching. And usually just to see how much is being expended in that particular envelope as well.
Thank you for that, Mark. Okay, moving on to our last item of our agenda for this evening, number eight point seven, the Long Range Facilities Plan. And Mark, you've also got this one.
Sure. So thank you, Chair. And so I'm I'm speaking for the the most recent meeting of the committee. And Tanya and Mark are are the trustee members on there. And so you'll see there's a recommended motion about priority areas. So the board recently changed the terms of reference, and that indicated kind of a bit of a change to the meeting schedule. And there's been positive feedback on a number of the changes from the committee structure level about ensuring that there's kind of choosing a focus of things that we want to achieve in a given year as committees. And so that was one of the main discussions that occurred at the last Long Range Facilities Plan. And so there's, really, there's four issues, although it only shows three. One, continuing focus on accessibility. And so that was really important to the committee. It is a recommendation in the plan as well, obviously, as a focus of the board more broadly. But it's another way of stating to the board that when additional funds become available or resources are available, that that's an area of of focus. And so the board put money aside out of the surplus, but will also spend money out of our annual facilities grant on these type of projects. Two is productively addressing capacity. So again, Rutherford was opened frankly because of the work, you know, the Long Range Facilities Plan recommendations to the board to adjust capacity. So we do have, you know, ND has slowed just a little bit, but we still have our number of secondaries in excess capacity. We're now going to be able to see the outcome of some of our our changes to our boundaries that we did. So did they work? Did they not? We we know that we missed that elementary school this year. So are there any dynamics that may help overcrowding in in schools to look at? So that will be something that we're, the committee is looking to discuss. Say to the board right now, we're unlikely to come back with a recommendation that's going to take place essentially prior to January, which is the time that you would expect parents to be aware. So a little bit of work to be done, probably to come back this time next year, perhaps just after the election, to talk about what the changes would be. So for instance, Wellington will have more space. What does that mean for our elementaries? Or but does that mean for ND in Wellington or Dover in Wellington as an example? So that's capacity. And then the replacement of NDSS, just the idea of not taking the board not taking the any, you know, foot off the brake. And I know our superintendent and our chair are working very hard on that. So those are the three kind of areas that currently exist in the plan that the committee talked about focusing on. The last area is, and it's not, doesn't need a motion because it's part of the terms of reference. But the committee also intended would like to review the plan to provide some recommendations that will probably maybe shrink the plan a little bit. So is there the ability to combine areas of focus? Have we, you know, we've completed some of the the tasks of the of the plan already. So what was a 32 or 33 recommendation plan is likely done five or six of of them. So just to highlight to the board that that would be the work. So the recommended motion is there, and I'm happy to answer any questions. I know there are some committee members here that may want to comment further, but I will stop talking.
Thank you, Mark. Do we have any questions for Mark before we move to the motion? Yeah, I I do have a question, actually. Since Rutherford opened, and I I'm wondering if perhaps if Jackie's still around, I don't know if she is or or Robin. Since Rutherford opened, have we heard any positive feedback or any feedback from the outlying schools? Randerson, Frank J. Nay, Mager of the alleviation of their population at all? And in terms of traffic, in terms of playground space, in terms of you know, the things that you would naturally see with reduced population?
Sure. So I haven't had any direct feedback about traffic. I mean, what the feedback or the the numbers that we're seeing is that the shrinking the numbers are making some of the changes at Magir didn't take away, didn't create that much more space in the school. It just allowed us to get closer to our classroom size and composition requirements. Randerson, I think, shrunk one, but had a similar dynamic. But certainly Frank Nay and Departure Bay are have have lowered in their number of students. Again, I can't speak for the traffic. I know Rutherford has indicated that the the parking lot is mercifully slow because there's so many local kids walking to school every day. But I haven't heard the the others. We have seen a couple of anomalies in some of the changes we did with respect to catchment that might be, might have been a few years too early. And that will be something we would talk about under adjusted capacity with the Long Range Facilities Committee.
Thanks, Mark. Yeah, the principal ma- ma- made an amazing public statement when it first opened up. He said, you know, it's amazing to see the parking lot so empty, but the school's so full. That means kids are walking here. So that's that's wonderful. It's great news for that. So yeah, happy to hear any questions before we move on to the motion. You see, Tanya is prepared to make the motion if we can have a second or after she makes it. Want to read that out? You got that there, Tanya?
Yeah, I got it right here.
Wonderful.
Strategic Directions Committee recommends that the Board of Education of School District Number 68, and I'm a Lady Smith, approved the priority areas in the Long Range Facilities Plan as recommended by the Long Range Facilities Plan Committee.
Wonderful. Do we have a second for that motion? Seconder by Leanne. Any discussion? Oh, do you want to motivate that motion, Tanya?
Yes, I'll just say that I was at the meeting where we went through all of this and there was a good, great consensus on all of these, on these ideas. I think we are moving in the right direction. I'm extremely pleased to see that.
I'm extremely pleased to see that we're gonna be shortening the plan a bit, taking out some things that we've accomplished. And we can now, I think, more easily focus on key areas of need.
Thank you. Thank you, Tanya. Um, any other discussion on the question before we we call the call the question? Don't hear any other than also as a member of the committee, I can echo what trustee Tanya said with respect to the consensus. It was a well-robust uh discussion, and we came to what we have here. And I'm I'm glad to be a member of the committee with Tanya. So we'll call the motion. If there's anyone opposed to the motion, please indicate it in the chat. And I don't see any, so that passes unanimously. Thank you, Tanya. Thank you, Mark. And thank you for the Long Range Facilities Planning Committee for all their hard work. Um, I think that's it uh for our agenda. Uh, do we have any correspondence or unfinished business or new business or any information, Karen, at all? Don't think we do.
No, no, and no questions either.
And no questions. And hearing that, then um if there's no further business, since there's no further business, um, I will call the meeting adjourned. Have a good night, everyone.
Thanks, Mark. Good night.
Good night and thank.